Okay, thank you for joining us for our first Board of Education meeting for the 2021-22 school year. Please join us in a pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will turn it over to Dr. Byrne for the report of the superintendent.
Good evening. Nice to see everyone. It was nice to be on the facilities tours of Milton and Midland earlier this evening. So I'm actually going to forego the report because the school opening presentation will essentially function as my report.
Okay, great. So then I think before we move on into the presentation, I just wanted to briefly acknowledge, because I think we'll probably try to do it a little bit more extensively at a later date, all of the extensive work and dedication that our custodial team did post the storm damage from Ida. And, you know, we saw it even on the tours of just the two buildings we were in tonight. And being in here, looking at how amazing all the buildings look, that that crew is just unbelievable and we cannot thank them enough for all of their dedication to getting the schools up and running on time. So, thank you.
And I would just acknowledge some of the folks in the room, Gabby O'Connor, and Caitlin Sasson, and Stephen Amy, who have been in the buildings pretty much night and day, Monday through Sunday, getting the buildings ready just with the regular construction. And then everything that happened with Ida, these folks have been here nonstop with Rob Camigliano and Kathy Vigiano from Central Office as well. Quite an incredible effort, so thank you.
Thank you to everyone. Thank you. Okay, so then we will move on into presentation and discussion one, the school opening update.
Great. Okay, so the segue from Ida. First, let me just say it's been a wonderful first two days of school, seeing the kids back, greeting many families at arrival, greeting students, visiting classrooms, being out in the buildings has been terrific. There's such energy and excitement. It is really wonderful to have school back in session and everybody here. I do want to just give an overview of the damage that we know of so far with Ida, talk a little bit about the work that we've done to get us open yesterday, and some of the work that's ahead. What I do not include in here is Central Office, where I think the board is aware that we had significant flooding at Central Office. In an effort to get the schools open, we kind of ignored Central Office because this was the highest priority. So we're working, and it's also a leased space, so we're working with building management on the remediation there. So that will hopefully begin in the next couple of days, but it will be quite disruptive at Central Office because it requires ripping out all the carpeting, cutting walls, and things like that to take care of that issue. But as I've shared in much of my communication, the great deal of damage occurred here at this campus. The inundation of water in this building and on this campus was quite extraordinary. I've talked about our boilers in the boiler rooms, so we have two different heating systems. We have a steam system and a hot water system, so there's different boilers that control those systems. All of those boilers were completely submerged and will need to be replaced. So in the meanwhile, we have worked on temporary boilers. Fortunately, we're good with hot water because we have point-of-service hot water throughout the building, but for heating season, which is going to come pretty quickly, we will have temporary boilers up and running so that we have the ability to heat the building. The electrical room, which is also underneath the building, was completely flooded and the panels were completely submerged. And there are multiple sets of panels that are down in the room, but what you have is you have the regular panels, then you have the transfer switch and the emergency panel. And all of those because of the age of the building and the way the building is wired from the original days of this building. They're in a basement room in a building that has not flooded in the past to this degree. Those were completely submerged. And the way you make the repairs to the panels is they're completely disassembled. You have to dry out and clean out the panel itself, all the breakers. You test the breakers to determine which ones can still function, which ones have to be replaced. So there were a number of breakers that had to be replaced, and these are not like the breakers in your garage or in your basement, where they're little breakers, they're boxes, and I would say, you know, sort of the size of my laptop, many of them, or larger. And you have these runs of big breakers that in some instances needed to be replaced and some, once they were cleaned out, dried, and tested, they were able to be put back into use. So what's important about the electrical system here is that it runs the network, it runs the fire alarm system, it essentially runs everything for the district out of the central location. So as we got that system back up and running, we got the network back up and running. So we were able to get different pieces of the system up, and we knew when they would come back on. So by Thursday of last week, when teachers returned, we had gotten everything with the exception of this room and the classrooms above. So this is what we would call the sixth grade wing, an MPR, did not have power, and the Performing Arts Center and some of the rooms surrounding there did not have power. But we had fire alarm systems, we had everything, knowing that on Saturday we would be powering up this wing, and on Sunday that we would be powering up the Performing Arts Center and the associated rooms around it. So that was a big piece. So replacing the transfer switch, because the generator did not get submerged, even though there was a tremendous amount of water, it came up, the brook came up over the Gaga Court, up the ridge, across the parking lot, and poor Anthony, who was here manning the building, his car was completely submerged in the parking lot toward the high school entrance. So that, I mean, many of us have seen flooding here before. That is just beyond extraordinary flooding. The field, which we've talked about, and I actually, well, I'm not happy that the field flooded, I am thrilled at the success of the tarping system that was designed exactly for this situation. We did not lose any of the crumb, which is the base of, and that was one of the reasons why that tarp was designed the way it was, was to keep the turf and the crumb in place so it doesn't wash away when the water that we know is going to come, comes. It was also scour protection, so protect it from debris and silt and things that come, but we've never quite had this level of debris and silt and literally giant trees that came down the brook. There was a very, very strong current the next morning. For anyone that, I know Jen, you were by, Chris, you were by, I mean, you've been here a long time. No one has seen this brook the way it is. It carried equipment that is incredibly heavy from one end of the stadium to the other end. We're still waiting for the cushions for track and field to dry out because they were carried all the way out of the stadium at the brush. The one big, the high jump is a 5,000-pound mat that's completely saturated, and the tractor couldn't even get it out of where it is. So as it dries out, we'll get that back into place. So the tarp did its job incredibly well. It does still require, anytime it's inundated with water, it still requires a full cleaning, sanitizing. What we had with this was some of the tarp panels were disturbed as the trees and equipment came across, so some mud and silt got into the field, which is still being worked through. The field has been Gmax tested, it's perfectly safe and usable, but it will have a few more groomings and some additional cleaning to get some of the mud that's along the edges and at different points. You can almost see if you're by the bridge, on the field side of the bridge, you can see the way the current was flowing because all along that edge and about 10 or 15 yards in, you sort of have a swath of, you could see there's additional dirt there that wasn't before. So the machine sort of picks everything up that's in, it's pulled behind a tractor, and it picks up all the crumb and everything and cleans it and deposits it back into the field. But thankfully, we did not have to get replacement crumb, the little balls and pebbles that are there, and it did its trick. For those that may ask, well, what about the drainage? There was no place for the drainage to go because the water was so high. So it was, you know, and I'd actually got downstream of the field back behind Pine Drive, and one of our, two of our teachers at the middle school, I was over there at their house where the water, the brook just went right through their house. Dean O'Gar, our football coach, the water went right through his house. It was quite a sight. We had some-
That's a quick question, just on that. So when we had Henry the week before, and I got to see the field as a waiting pool for the first time, I had asked about like, oh, should we try to barricade the brook? And Chris pointed out that, no, that that area is an intentional flood zone, we just happen to have a school field there. Now after Ida, I have the same question but on the other side. Should we try to put something on the other side of the brook so that if we have something that's big in the future, it still funnels towards the flood zone but doesn't, but maybe might not hit the school as much?
Right, so we have no ability to do anything other than exactly what is there. We wanted to put a retaining wall at the north end toward the post road, and because FEMA has been involved in this site in the past, we couldn't raise it. You may remember, well, it was actually before it went to the proposal, we had talked about trying to raise the field so that it didn't become an issue. We were not allowed because FEMA said you can only do what is exactly there, you can't do anything different in terms of the site. So we couldn't put floodgates or anything, although I did put a call into the city today because what, Rob and I were over there, and I think I may have mentioned this to you and Jane last week, that we now have some islands at low tide, which we have not had before, which makes complete sense because with everything that came from upstream, the stream bed is now higher than it was before, which is very concerning because now there is a less distance for it to go to become a flooding situation again. And I know we do not have the, we would not be allowed to dredge, but I know the city is having conversations about the flood issues and everything with Ida, so I put a call into the city manager today just to make him aware because we're out there looking at this specific issue today with concerns about the next flooding situation because it's now, you know, it's a little surprising to see islands up by the Gaga Court at low tide.
Along that same line, if there's a potential-
I'll put your microphone.
Sorry, thank you. Along that same line, for the electrical backbone for the entire district, is there anything we could do to back that up in a way that if we were to flood again because potentially the brook that is higher, hopefully this is not going to happen again, but is there, because of the importance of that electrical room to the district, is there any work we can do?
We're actually, that's part of our next level of conversation. Now that we're back up and running, we've already started talking about what are the steps we could take, what would the cost be? We do have new electrical service in the building, so if you recall, in between here and the high school, there's that new fenced-in area, that's the new electrical service. Is it possible, feasible, and cost-effective to bring that service up to there? We have to work with our professional team to determine, and our engineers and electricians to determine what it would take to do that.
No, you're 100% right. Two years ago, we embarked on doing some, taking some measures because we had flooding in the past to lift up as much equipment as we possibly can. Unfortunately, the way some of the infrastructure comes into the building, there are limitations as to how high you can lift some of the equipment, but we are taking another look with our professionals because we, to Eric's point, the new electrical service has changed since the last time we looked at this, so are there opportunities for us to make changes so that we can try to mitigate this in the future? That's on our radar as well.
So we did have here, high school, middle school, some water get into classrooms and some corridors that required some remediation, but frankly, that remediation was sort of insignificant compared to the electrical. But those typical remediation efforts are drying out and in some cases, cutting baseboards, it's usually about two feet from the floor that they cut, dry those things out, and then repatch them. The mechanical rooms with the boilers and the condensing units, we had some technology that, from water that got in different places. Caitlin, I understand it wasn't a tremendous amount of technology, but it's already been taken care of. Yep. Smoke sensors were destroyed, so because of fire code, there are smoke sensors in the boiler rooms and the electrical rooms, and all of those had to be replaced as part of the system. And then the science wing, for those of you that were around for that project, know that underneath the science wing, there's a crawl space with a terrific pump system that pumps water out, but with the loss of power, that water sat there for a couple of days, so there was some mold growth on some of the wooden furniture that was cleaned and remediated as part of the effort there in the science wing. Over at Midland, we had water accumulation in six classrooms that required extensive remediation. There were six classrooms that were along the back of the building, so the amount of water that was coming in, there's a, and Chris knows this, I know for sure, there's a curtain drain system around the back of Midland. That curtain drain system was completely overwhelmed by the volume of water that was coming, as we all saw everywhere, everything was overwhelmed and just could not. So water came in the back of those kindergarten classrooms and 50 carries is-
22 to 50.
Yeah, and so that's been remediated, drying out in some instances. It was cutting walls and drying that out and replacing the sheet rock and repairing some flooring. But again, it's, a big part of the remediation is the time because it has to be completely dried out and air tested. All of these areas are all air tested as well to make sure that there were no negative impacts on the air quality. The electrical system was flooded at Midland as well, but it really didn't, it didn't suffer the damage, it wasn't inundated to the level that it was here. I think there was one breaker that needed to be replaced, and that was a simple fix. There was water accumulation in the boiler room there, but again, it wasn't, it didn't inundate the boilers and cause that issue. The biggest issue at Midland was the remediation of those six classrooms. At Milton, we were relatively unscathed. The roof, as you may recall, was not completed yet, they were still finishing up the roof, and there were some leaks in the gymnasium cafeteria and the library. The roof has now been finished, so we had no water last night with the rain that came through last night, and we suspect that that was just because those were areas that were not yet 100% complete. Osborne, we had flooding in classrooms and common areas that required remediation, particularly the main entrance. So those of you that have been to Osborne or go to Osborne, you know that there's a courtyard, right, when you walk in. It's sort of the courtyard because of the amount of water turned into like a fishbowl or a terrarium, and the water was just coming in. So the courtyard is surrounded by three curtain walls. So you have the curtain wall in the corridor by Nurse Potter's office, the curtain wall on what was the old library, which is now the brand-new special services suite, and the curtain wall on the auditorium side. The water was coming in pretty rapidly through those three curtain walls. It did not, on the kindergarten side, which is a brick wall, not a curtain wall system, it didn't come in through there. I know Pete and Charlie, who were working the overnight, in addition to housing a family that, not an Osborne family, but someone that was just traveling on 95 and got off because the weather was so poor, a husband and wife, the wife was quite pregnant, keeping them overnight and keeping them safe in a conference room, they did an incredible job keeping, you know, pumping the water out almost as quickly as it came in. So in the common areas, it really didn't do, there were some sheet rock that had to be removed, but the flooring was fine once it dried out. So at Osborne, there were a number of classrooms and the special services suite where we had to cut, or the remediation folks had to cut the baseboards and dry them out and replace them, and most of that's already complete or in the final steps in process.
Eric, can I ask one question? Going back to the boiler rooms in the middle school, high school, did you say how many boilers are there in the middle school and high school?
I don't know the specific numbers. They refer to it as a boiler plant, so it's similar to what you saw at Milton tonight. It's the entire boiler system, so there's multiple boilers that are down there.
Got it. Okay. And did I hear you correctly that there'll be an interim plan because we'll order the boilers, but they won't be here in time? Is that what you were saying?
Right, there'll be temporary boilers that are put in place for heating system because we don't believe that, we've already ordered the temporary boilers-
Right.
-because we do not believe that we will have the permanent boilers in time for the heating season. So there are temporaries that are on their way.
The boiler replacement was part of the construction work that was happening this summer. So if everyone remembers, we started that work in April. We were-
So there were, well, part of the, one half of it was brand-new boilers.
Right, so, which we were literally completing-
Last week.
-right now. So if you think about the timeframe from when we started this project to completion, temporary boilers are a necessity to get us back to where we were Wednesday before Ida happened. We knew this pretty much Thursday morning-
Yep.
-so to the credit of our vendors who we've been working with-
Great.
-they immediately went into action to secure temporary boilers because we know we're going to need them for heating season as we rebuilt.
Yeah, we knew we were competing with a lot of other people looking for temporary boilers.
I was about to say, with construction going on right now, it's hard to find things like boilers, so-
Correct.
-I'm glad that someone had the foresight to get that order placed right away, so.
We, I have to tell you, by 10:15 on Wednesday night, the calls already started coming in. We were already mobilizing at that point. It was the most agonizing thing to not be able to come here, but all of us who were home, who were fortunately able to be home, we were already putting into place, you know, mediation companies coming out first thing Thursday, triggering insurance, like everybody was doing everything they possibly could because we knew that Thursday was going to be a challenge.
Well, I've heard from several parents that they just can't believe what you got done in that short period of time. So thank you for, like I said, jumping on that right away because I think we'd be in a much different position and not opening school on Monday if we went to that.
Yeah, Anthony DiGiovanni, Pete Corcoran Jr., and Charlie Thomas were really the heroes of that evening that stayed in our buildings, did what they could to protect the district, some of them losing their own homes as a result, and just were amazing. So we're very fortunate.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you.
So a couple of the pieces, so obviously, you know, we had to delay school by two days. We did work with a bunch of community organizations and set up childcare programs that were available to our families. I saw Allison Relier from the Historical Society, their program was completely full. I know the Rye Art Center programs were full. We had the Y and Kids Face over at Osborne, and they had a pretty large group of kids that were there. And we will be housing the Y's after-school programs at Osborne until they make their, I mean, they, the damage at the Y is incredible, it's so sad. The brand-new rooms that they had built for their daycare program, so we're working with the Y, we've got that set up at Osborne, and the music room in the cafeteria, and Kids, music room in the gym, and Kids Face is in the cafeteria as usual. So we're, you know, the, the community certainly came together and they put great programs together. I know some of you, your kids attended them, but you know that they were incredibly helpful to families that needed, families who were doing cleanup and needed their kids to be somewhere, and families who were working in the community as well. So I'm going to switch just to enrollment. This is sort of just a checkpoint of where we are right now. We are enrolling new families pretty much daily as typical in September. So if you look, just, I'll run through the totals. At Milton, our projections were for 337 students, we have 328. At Midland, it was for 460 students, we have 489. At Osborne, it was for 460, we have 466. At the middle school, it was for 709, we have 698. And at the high school, it was for 982, we have 942. So for grand total, our, in the five schools in the district was, the projection was 2948, and we are at 2923 right now. So, and that's with, knowing that we have families that have reached out and are beginning the process of enrollment and all of the paperwork. So, you know, we'll certainly, we update this weekly, we monitor the enrollment very carefully, and, you know, but it's a pretty close number. We're usually a little bit closer, but I think COVID obviously has had impacts on being able to project things, but-
The projected here, this is like your projections, and I know we've looked at it different times, there's some sort of like company or service that has like further out projections-
Right.
...which are known to be way off. These are like-
So these are our projections that we presented to the community in the spring, and that's taking the information from the demographers and then the information we know, knowing what we know about our community. So that 2948 was what we had projected in the spring and built the budget and the staffing around.
So the only one that really popped to me is Milton Kindergarten was projected at 49, Osborne Kindergarten was projected at 55, and then the actuals are, which are, you know, very close, and the actuals are 41 and 71, which is, you know, huge swing. But is that, does that matter at all, or is it just doesn't-
No, we thought that number was really low on Osborne when we put it there, which is why we kept that at four sections last year based on the history over at Osborne.
Kindergarten is the biggest- Is the biggest wild card because you really are heavily relying on the demographer information for that, as opposed to the other grades where we can kind of weigh ourselves what the expectation is? So we always safeguard what happens with kindergarten, knowing that it's strictly data-driven from the clouds? I don't know how they do it, but-
But in terms of, I mean, unless the numbers got much bigger skewed, like having 71 versus 41 at Osborne, Milton, versus something more balanced, doesn't really matter, or?
Yeah, in the grand scheme of things, it was certainly within the reasonable range with class sizes at the buildings, and if there were ever an instance where the numbers were just radically different at another building, we would reassign people based on those numbers.
And just as a point of reference from the past, the use of the demographers that we're using right now was actually an improvement over what had been used previously, although it's still very much a guessing game at the end of the day because what we've seen traditionally is that the demographers come in much lower than what Rye tends to end up with at the end of the day.
100%. It also, so what the demographers actually use are prior history enrollment as a piece of the data that they insert to come up with these numbers, whereas in the past, that wasn't necessarily the case.
And I think there was, if I'm remembering correctly, it was something like a 10, they felt like if we get a span of 10 years-
Correct.
felt like if we get a span of 10 years of data, that that would then help us be a little bit more reliable.
Correct.
But I don't think we're at the 10 years yet.
No.
Yeah, I didn't think so.
We're still under five.
Okay, that's what I thought, yeah.
I think we're at three.
I just, sorry, a specific question about Midland, just curious, in second grade, it looked like the projected went from 80 to 94. Were you always going to have five teachers, or did you have to in the summer make a change?
No, we were planning for the five classes there.
Okay.
We didn't, we didn't shift any stuff.
Okay, okay, great.
Just looking at, other than the kindergarten, which makes total sense, the two other numbers that seem to pop the most is Osborne, fifth projected at 93 but actual 81, and ninth grade projected at 244 but actual 221. Is that, I mean, do any theories on what's going on there?
Well, we do know that there was a tremendous amount of turnover in the real estate market. It could be that, you know, and I, obviously, we don't know 100%, but you could have had a lot of movement out with families at those two grade levels. You know, often, if people are moving, they may plan it when their children are at a transition point. We just don't, we don't know enough about the market itself and what the impact was there.
It's very helpful to see this because I think, you know, last year was such an anomaly in terms of what we were looking at for enrollment, and so it was, it was a little bit uncertain how things were going to shake out for this year, especially at the kindergarten ages, because I think even back in the spring, we didn't have a really solid sense of what this might turn out to be.
Right.
So, thank you.
And we know that this will continue to go up over the next couple of weeks.
And because when is our, when's Bed's Day? You know, what becomes our official number?
End of October.
So, we still, you know, on state, we have plenty of time.
And Bed's Day is when we, that's sort of the day when the state takes the number of kids on that day, and that's the official enrollment for the school year, because they have one point in time for funding for everything else. When we do the projections.
That's what we'll base our comparisons on when we come back for budget, so you'll always hear about Bed's Day enrollment.
Six, October 6th.
Thank you.
In the old days, there were all these forums, people had to bubble in on Bed's Day, it was a big deal, and now it's a lot easier, thankfully. So, just the next slide is just a brief staffing update. So, we had a grand total of new faculty and staff this year of 40, and within that, and we, you may have read in the newspapers and my Rye and the announcements from individual principals, all the new folks were introduced in buildings. So, there's four administrators, two of whom are sitting here tonight at the table, Brian and Tricia, and 18 teachers and 18 staff members, from our athletic trainer to teacher aides, teaching assistants. So, it's a terrific group, and we had a really wonderful new teacher orientation for the teachers at the end of August, pre-IDA and all of the craziness.
Are those roughly normal turnover numbers?
I would say it's a little higher this year than it has been the last couple of years. We had a number of retirements last year that, you know, came later on in the year. We did have three nursing vacancies at the end of the summer, and I know in talking to lots of folks that there are people that COVID had, you know, sort of, at the end of the year, they were just feeling like it's time. Most of the folks that left retired, which we're happy for them, they served the community well for a long time and moved into the retirement system at this point. And so, the last, and we sort of focused on this a bit earlier tonight, just a little bit about the capital project. So, I know I put this out in some of the communications, we've done and are finishing up about $25 million worth of construction in the district. The secure entrances at all of the schools, which are nearing completion. We are, as anyone that's done construction or anyone that's trying to remediate from Ida, knows that there are supply chain delays, so doors and what we call the storefronts, which are the door sets for the secure entries, are not here yet. Those are all things that we're prepared, once they come, to complete the installation of those. The third-floor renovation here at the high school is underway, the elevator installation, which is part of the ADA accessibility piece here at the high school, the fire code compliance pieces at the high school, the continued bathroom renovations here at the high school, middle school. Over at Midland, as we saw tonight, part of the tour, the secure entry, the main office, the classroom renovations, the beautiful lighting and floors, the HVAC upgrade with fresh air ventilation, a complete upgrade of that system, the library renovation, the auditorium renovation, the bathrooms that look nothing like the old bathrooms. I remember the great Rye bathroom tour a couple of years ago when we went, before the community voted on the capital project, we toured all of the different bathrooms. Midland did not have the great color scheme of Osborne, but they were pretty horrendous as well. Fire code compliance, old buildings, when you start construction, you need to bring them up to code for fire code and ADA compliance. At Milton, the secure entry, the new boilers, the library renovation, the roof replacement. At Osborne, the secure entry and main office, and I believe that's the next meeting when we go to Osborne, which will be just as exciting as Midland was today. Classroom renovations, not the complete overhaul of the HVAC system, but in different sections of the building, HVAC upgrades at Osborne, the library renovation, the auditorium renovation, the bathrooms, the pink and yellow bathrooms are gone forever. The pink and yellow bathrooms are gone. The fire code compliance, ADA compliance, the special services suite, which is an incredible resource for supporting our kids, and the full electrical service upgrade. And just a shout-out to Mayor Cohen, who helped us out when ConEd kept canceling on us, when we needed to make the final transfer over to the new electrical system. Gabby was calling everybody. We were actually at the administrative retreat, and ConEd management was having a retreat in the same facility at the Edith Macy Center, and Gabby and Rob, we were all waiting outside of their door at their break time to introduce ourselves to them. So, we made some connections there, but I know Jen reached out to the mayor on our behalf because we heard from ConEd that Mayor Cohen's got some juice with ConEd, and it helped because we were able to get, so, thank you, Mayor Cohen, for your efforts on helping us to make that transfer. So, it's, as you saw tonight, I mean, the transformation is just extraordinary in the spaces, and some of the biggest projects that are still being worked on, that will finish up later on in the fall and early in winter, are really exciting, the libraries, the auditoriums, the third-floor space upstairs for the academy and that, what incredible, I mean, when we, when they opened up the third floor, I don't know if I sent you all pictures, but we should send you pictures, like, we had no idea that that third floor was what it was underneath the ceilings and the walls, and what an incredible space that's going to be. So, that is quite something to see in the construction. So, I'm going to shift a little bit because I feel like I wanted to do a little bit of a look back because this September is my fifth September as superintendent of the schools, and five years ago, when we started the year at this very board meeting, I shared some early data that I had been collecting as part of my entry process, and some of you actually came, I met you for the first time through the entry process, and know that I had met with about 600 different community members over the course of that first year, talking to them about the Rye City School District, their hopes, their dreams, their expectations, their desires, what they felt were our challenges, what they felt were our strengths and areas that we need to improve upon. And at the time, I was the fourth superintendent in six years, and people had a lot to say, a lot to say. There were some people that I usually slotted an hour for an entry interview, and there was at least one person that had three parts of their entry meeting. And just as an aside, we have lots of people going through entry, our new folks, because it's something that we all, we do now with every administrative and staff development position, people engage in a very thought-out, detailed entry process. So, what I'd like to do is to share some of the expectations. There were a list of, a bunch of expectations that were shared with me in those first 93 or so entry meetings, and I just wanted to share and then do a little bit of an update on some of those areas. And the first being, and this was unequivocal, is creating a cohesive vision for the school district. And when I think about that, I think about the Rye commitment behind us and what a powerful statement about what's valued and important in our community. The assurances to students, faculty, staff, and the community state what this school district is all about and what we're trying to get at. It's been revised, it's, you look at it regularly and talk about, are we achieving the Rye commitment? And it really speaks to us being an equitable, inclusive environment where students learn to be socially responsible citizens who can think critically, communicate effectively, collaborate, and creatively solve problems in a diverse global environment. And I can't think of a more appropriate and timely vision for what public education should be today. And I know we put tremendous effort into trying to fully achieve the Rye commitment, and we're not there yet. I know that all of our faculty and staff are working toward that goal and getting us to that place. The second thing I was told is to build relationships, and frankly, I can't imagine there ever being a more important time that building and nurturing relationships is so critical. The division, anger, and strife is the norm in the world today. Truth doesn't matter anymore, respect seems to be lost, there's a lot of yelling louder and louder, and a lack of listening is, it seems to be lost, but, you know, we want to focus on recovering from these past 19 months and moving out of that place of upset and anger. And so, I know that our teachers were so excited to reconnect with the kids, our administrators so excited to reconnect with the community, and I know, you know, we've set up a lot of different community events so that I can get back to the things that I did in the Rye community before COVID. I think next Sunday, I'm participating in a program at Rye Presbyterian on Sunday morning. Sarah and I will be visiting the preschools as we used to do before COVID, all these things that were sort of those important pieces of getting out into the community and building and nurturing those relationships, where we can get back to doing that face-to-face and in person. So, for me, as the leader of the school district, but what we're all doing in the classrooms today, and I'll be meeting with the interfaith council next week as well, incredible resources and important relationships in the community. I was told to be visible and present in the schools and community, and being out in the schools every day this week and last week, and getting back to that is really important. And I've made it a goal of mine since the day I got here to be in classrooms, no kids, no teachers, no families. I've been, number four was to communicate, number five was to bring meaningful, ongoing professional development to the district, number six was to solve our space issues. We're working on that one. Number seven was to create systems and structures, number eight was to help Rye become an educational leader, not a follower, help make us cutting-edge. Number nine was to be approachable, number 10 was to listen, number 11 was to be funny, number 12 was to give feedback. And I'd just like to share, this is pretty exciting work at our, we had our administrative retreat when we met our ConEd's and friends a few weeks ago, and we always have a focus of our administrative retreat, and this year, while building relationships with some new folks, the four new administrators on the team was certainly a big piece of that, we launched a year-long study on coaching and feedback that we'll be studying across the year. So, the administrative council, which is all of the administrators in the district, we meet monthly, we launched that year-long study, setting goals for that study in our work with coaching. I know here at the high school, middle school, there's a coaching project going on with the departments and the administrative team, and so that's really for us to continue to grow our skill as educational leaders and in moving the buildings forward. And so, we've committed that time, that planning, and the support so that course of study happens at each administrative council meeting across the year. Number 13, be fair and honest. Number 14, bridge the gap between teachers, administration, and the Board of Education. Number 15, don't keep the status quo, and I would honestly say that we certainly have not kept the status quo. We've got so many new faces over the last five years and new structures of support. We continue to look at ways to grow, improve, and become the school system that the Rye commitment challenges us to be. Be proactive and not reactive, build trust in our school system, be positive, work collaboratively. And number 20, stay for a while. So, back on that September day of 2017, I said to everyone, well, we've got some work to do, and I'm so pleased with our growth and motivated by where we still need to improve. I'm proud of the efforts of everyone on the team and the administrators, the faculty, the board. You guys have jumped in and done some of the crazy things we've asked you to do, sitting and having book talks on camera in front of everybody. But I'm especially proud of the efforts of everyone as we've navigated this incredible, the greatest challenge we've ever faced in public education in this country with COVID. And I'm really excited by what lies ahead for us and optimistic that we will uphold the tenets of the Rye commitment. So, as you know, I give a book out to the faculty every year, and you actually know the book quite well because the book that I gave, I believe, is one that really aligns incredibly well with the Rye commitment and our focus to be an equitable, inclusive school system, and that's The Power of Different by Dr. Gail Salz. It's an incredible read to help one see what our society classifies as disabilities can ultimately be great strength. So, I know that the board's been reading the book, and there'll be a book talk on October 26th, right here at the table. And so, just in wrapping up, I'm just going to show a short video that I shared with the faculty on the first day, and I'd like to share with the board and the community, and this is what it's all about.
I have a lot of memories from when I was a child. One that's always stuck out to me, though, was when I was about 10 years old and I was in school, and I struggled. And I didn't struggle with English, math, or science, I struggled holding still. And I would try to listen and focus and process ideas, but I couldn't help myself. Then, to be honest, I would sit there and then I would just start tapping, and the students in the class would look at me and they'd say, hey, stop tapping. A lot of the time, I didn't even realize I was doing it. And then eventually, even the teachers got after me, and they would yell at me, and they'd say, Clint, you have to stop tapping. It got so bad that I got sent to the principal's office for tapping. And he said to me, okay, maybe when you go back to class, just try sitting on your hands. And so, I did, I went back to class, and when I felt myself starting to tap, I just, I did this, I sat on my hands, and that worked for about five seconds. One time, I was tapping in class, and my teacher, Mr. Jensen, he looked at me and he yelled, and he said, Clint, stay after class. And I thought to myself, this is it, I am done. Now, I've always been the type of person that believes that a single moment in time can change a person's life, and this was one of those moments for me, and I will never forget it. And so, I was sitting there with Mr. Jensen and an empty classroom, and he walked past me and he sat next to his desk, and he said, Clint, come here, I want to talk to you. And as he looked me right in the eye, he said, no, I need you to know something, you're not in trouble, but I do have just one question that I have to ask you. And he asked, he said, have you ever thought about playing the drums? And in that moment, Mr. Jensen, he leaned back. And in that moment, Mr. Jensen, he leaned back and he opened the top drawer of his desk. And he reached in and he pulled out my very first pair of drumsticks. And he held them in his hands and he looked at me and he said, hey, Clint, you're not a problem. From that moment on, I've never put those sticks down. I've toured, recorded, and played drums all over the world. My whole college education was paid for with drumsticks in my hand. Just because of a single moment in time when somebody believed in me and he saw something in me that I didn't even see within myself. And from that moment, I learned that there's a difference between being the best in the world and being the best for the world.
So it has been, we had great energy. Ida tried to take that away, but as you walked through the buildings yesterday and greeted families and kids yesterday when everyone arrived, that energy is there and it is wonderful. And I'm thrilled at the start in the opening, the challenges we've had, but what our staff has accomplished so far in getting us to yesterday and the connections they're making in classrooms. So thank you. It's an exciting start to the school year.
No, thank you. You know, I was sat and listened to you go through the list of 20 things, and all I could think of was that all the work that's been done on vision, on relationships, on communication, on improving the relationships between the teachers and the staff, the administration, the board, is what creates the ability for us to get through COVID and Ida and for people to show up still excited to be here and so excited to keep going. The fact that this district could keep moving forward during a pandemic, when we saw what's going on around the world in education, the fact that we were able to do what we're able to do and still move forward, the fact that we're able to do the construction work that we're doing at the same time, everyone's on the same page and everyone's moving forward, and it's because of all that work. So thank you.
I could not agree more, and that was an amazing way of putting it, Chris. And I think, you know, what it also says to me is that I feel like we are now at a great moment to look ahead. So there's been all this amazing work that's been done to kind of give us our foundation in those first five years. And especially now, I think, coming off of the last year where kind of everything got turned on its head a bit, you can reflect and look at things in a very different way. We know there's a lot of, you know, great ways that we can keep growing. And so it just feels like it's a ripe opportunity now to kind of set forth like a plan, a strategic plan for the next five years for the district to keep building on all of this amazing work that you've already, the whole team has already established, you know, from whether it's our facilities, our professional development, the expansion and growth of all of those areas has been amazing. And it's true, it's because there's a centralized vision, it's because there's a centralized viewpoint at which, and at the end of the day, overarching goal of what we're trying to do.
So just two things. One, I was on the phone with Gabby and Eric on Thursday, and I said to Gabby, I said, Gabby, how is your house? And she said to me, my house is fine. It's my homes in Rye that I'm worried about. That to me, I've worked in a lot of school districts with a lot of people, and I've never heard that. And it wasn't flippant, it was sincere, it was concern, it was a true love for this place. And it is evident in hearing all of the stories about taking in people off of 95 who are about to give birth while their own homes are being destroyed. Saving this building while their car is being driven down the post road without a driver. This is a community of administrators and teachers and staff and faculty that cares so very much. And so many people over the weekend said, what Callie said to me was, I don't really think we're going to get open. Just come on, be honest. We're not opening on Monday, right? Like, that was just to appease us. And I said, no, I'm telling you, nobody has said to me even like quietly, like, we might not open. And that happens solely because of people who don't just like where they are, they love where they are. And that is so evident. And so I just thank all of you so very much because there are so many stories that we don't know, that the community doesn't know, and then you hear snippets of it, and when you hear it, you go, oh, gosh, like, really? Oh, what? And so it is just, it is just pure dedication and appreciation for your true commitment on so many levels to this district and to our kids and our community. And I just can't say thank you enough. The second story I have is that I spoke to a good friend of mine on Sunday, and she said to me, she goes, today feels like the first day of kindergarten for all of my kids. She has four. And she has them at all levels. She said, I am just so excited for all of them to go back because there is this vision, this commitment, this dedication in the midst of a global pandemic while education is being challenged in so many different ways. But there is a dedication here to take what is best for kids and to put it into action. And so again, my kids had an amazing first two days of not kindergarten, kindergarten, and that's because of the people who work here. And so thank you.
I just want to add too, I mean, listening to that list of, I guess it was 20 or however many it was, and really, my first thought was, wow, that board really loaded you up. But the second, you know, one of those pithy sayings that about like, you know, how to be a successful CEO and all that, you know, is one is sort of like, only focus on one big task every year. And it doesn't mean you're not administering a lot of things, but like, you kind of take one big thing. And clearly, just listening to that list and using that to reflect on only what I know, you know, three and a half years in Ryan, but hearing the other stories, you clearly have not taken that path, but you have managed to be successful at it. And, you know, and that's impressive, though I do also admire knowing, you know, which ones to give up, like being funny.
I wasn't doing so well with that anyway.
But that's okay. I think you're getting the important ones.
At least they're singing when we have a snow day, right?
It was only my singing once.
That's okay, because now we've got you.
Yes.
And one thing I have to share, and I've talked about this in the last couple of weeks after Ida, was the kids, you know, our students and our teams that mobilized and Suzanne Short and Susan Reed Delay, you know, pointing kids in directions and finding out from members of the community where help was needed. And, you know, I know some folks had a team show up at their house and they cleaned things out.
Several teams showed up at several homes.
Yeah. And I think that's illustrative of this incredibly special community. And I know I've said this many times before, when I first came to Ryan, people said, you know, the kids say thank you when they leave class. I think, Chris, you told me that first. And I was like, yeah, yeah, but they don't really mean it. They're just, you know, trying to get extra credit or something. And those are our kids, this is our community, and they say thank you and mean it. And, you know, today I was watching the field hockey, varsity field hockey, they were up 4-0 when I left. And Caden Welling came over to me and just said, thanks, and gave me a big handshake because the field is back. And he needs the field for running touchdowns into the end zone for us. But, you know, and these are our kids, and they're all saying hello. I was walking back to go to Milton, you know, talking with the kids as they were coming from their practice to go watch the field hockey team play and then the JV team play after them. And this is a special, special place and incredible.
I'm going to, I've been trying, I think every year I've found a way to tell this very quick story, and I'm now, I finally get to retire it, but, you know, this, we're going back eight to 10 years. We had some security consultants coming through back then, and our custodians were giving the tour of the district. And at the end, the security consultants came to us and said, you have the safest buildings because no one cares about the buildings as much as your custodial staff. Literally, they were leaning down and picking up pieces of paper as they were giving a tour of the buildings, pointing out security elements. And that's what stuck with these consultants. And they said, you guys have people who care. I never have to tell that story again because what I heard tonight in our tours about our staff, everybody stepping up before Ida, just through construction in the summer and the amount of work they've been putting in, the amount of forethought, the amount of detail that's being picked up by our own people, not our contractors, keeping the contractors on task and actually improving their work. I'm blown away. We can't get into it tonight. We'll have to do a full detailing at some point. But then what happened through the storm, as you just said, people, while their own homes were being destroyed, were here protecting our buildings. I'm in tears just thinking about that, having seen what happened. So it's incredible, absolutely incredible.
I heard you were in the poison ivy, getting the building materials that our kids didn't go, Suzanne would not allow them into the poison ivy. But I don't think Cassie was going to let you out of it.
I don't, yeah, I need a little more Suzanne in my life. Yes, I was pulling some crap out.
Yep. Well, the dedication is unparalleled. And we've seen this, this is not new to this year. We've seen it for many, many years. So this is just another example that illustrates it across the board. So, you know, like, I think we're going to have other opportunities to do some more thank yous to many members of the school district, faculty and staff and administration. And, you know, it's, this is just like a precursor to that. But, you know, we really, the amount of work and effort that goes in on a daily basis, seven days a week often, not just five, for many people is unbelievable. And I know there's, for any of you folks who are on Twitter, there's often a hashtag that gets attached to some of the tweets that come out, and it's RCS dedicated. And it never fails to be the most accurate way to describe a lot of what happens in our district. So we, again, I think we've kind of probably covered the thank yous, but it really feels like there's not enough to say. But we do have other business, so I think we probably should move on. But thank you for that update. And to your point, Chris, there will be a later presentation on the capital project to give updates.
I don't believe, I think it's the meeting after next.
Okay, so in early October, yeah, where we can get into some more of that. But I do think it's important, and I hope people can join us for that because it's really, what I'm hoping we can do a lot is illustrate so much of the forethought and planning that has gone into, and we did a little bit, we got a first snapshot of it at the end of last school year when we talked about the updates at that point. But just the coordination and, you know, how much that saves you in time and money often, and, you know, there's those pieces that with a project at this scale are so critical to how it gets implemented on a day-to-day basis. And so I think it's going to be really important to talk about those things.
Great.
Great. So now I guess we can move on to the next presentation, which is an update on next steps for the Race Inclusivity and Community Task Force.
Okay. So I'll just give a little context before we jump in. For those watching at home, on June 15th, the task force presented recommendations to the Board of Education. On August 12th, which was the last meeting of the board, well, we did have the short meeting for some staffing, but the board held a public work session to discuss the recommendations and next steps. And so what we did on that night, the administrators at the table here, we all took copious notes, went back to the offices and compiled all those notes. And tonight, what I'm going to present is sort of an updated status and our understanding based on that conversation on August 12th of our task and what's going to happen. And we put some timeline pieces to things so that we can go and start moving forward on these.
Great.
And just to be, when you say the updated status, tonight, that's from the administration, right?
Right. This is from the administration. So this is August 12th, the board had a discussion. We went back, made sure that we captured that discussion. The tasks that you charged us with that night, we wanted to make sure, so I'm going to present them back, want to make sure we got them all correct, which I believe we did. And we put some timeframes around it because I know we did discuss in generalities, doing some things and involving some others. Just want to land on that tonight, and then we'll actually go and pull the folks in that will be doing different pieces of this and take those next steps. So we'll start in the extracurricular and athletics arena. There were two recommendations that were discussed that night. And the first was to evaluate present extracurricular and athletic programs. So we discussed, and we concur based on our notes, that this is an analysis that could be done by October 31st, and it would involve the athletic director, the high school and middle school administration. And they're going to evaluate our current programming in terms of what programs are offered, who is participating, look to see if there are any gaps in programming, involving students in this process, working with our student council and interested students, and then determining if there's a need for any additional data that needs to be collected. So they're going to be taking a look at, so when we say extracurriculars, we're talking about clubs, we're talking about teams, we're talking about club teams, we're talking about competition teams, we're talking about things from Model UN to debate club to Ultimate Frisbee Club, which I don't think we have, but the wide range, we have a lot of different offerings for kids. And so working with the students to conduct this evaluation with the administrative team to determine what is it that we're offering, what range of interests does it meet, is it meeting our kids' needs, and what are the kids telling us about this? Are we offering the right things? Are we missing different parts of our population in the school because we're not offering certain things? So we feel very comfortable and confident that that's something that we can accomplish by October 31st. And I know we'll get the team moving on that right away, and we'll get our student council representatives involved in that process as well. The second recommendation was to take a close look at the eligibility policy, which this actually will involve the policy committee, but also the board's policy committee in conjunction with high school administration and middle school administration because we need to understand, we know what the policy is, and the policy has been recently revised, but we want to understand the scope of ineligible students that happen day-to-day at the school. So understanding who is ineligible to participate, why are they ineligible, look back a couple years because this last year has been strange with COVID, but try to go back, you know, two or three years and determine, are there things that we need to put in place or structures that need to be put in place that would be more supportive of students so that it would increase eligibility? So that's going to involve the administrative team in conjunction with the policy committee. So the administrators will do all that preliminary data gathering, and then we'll come back again. This will be by October 31st. We'll reach out to you, Jane, as the policy chair, to come and share the learning with the policy committee.
Great.
The next area was the student support area. And the first was to evaluate channels for students in accessing support. And what was meant by this was if there is a problem, an incident, an issue that a student experiences with regard to exclusivity or bullying or experiences with regard to exclusivity or bullying or any kind of in-school situation that kids, number one, understand how to report things, that they understand it because the information is readily available and kids know it because we've shared it in ways that kids receive it. So it's, it's evaluating the existing processes that are in place and the reporting mechanisms that are in place and how we're disseminating information to students for clarity, accessibility and, and understanding what works for students and how do we best get the messages to them so that if they are in a situation that they need to access support, that they know how to do that, that it's an automatic thing. And obviously involving students and, and the concept of affinity groups came up and this came from the students on the task force, was bringing different groups of students together, so students of the LGBTQ plus community to talk to them and ask them about what they're feeling and, and do they understand where to go for help? Our BIPOC students, do they understand how to get help and support? We, we have our, our mechanisms for DASSA, you know, we, we have signs all over the place, in the bathrooms, on the backs of doors and hallways and QR codes, they're something that we started using a few years ago, so the kids need to report something. But evaluating this to, to see is, is this, do kids know how to get help? Is it clear? Is it simple? Is it easily accessible? The second was to create some kind of student ambassador program. And the whole point of a student ambassador program was, and if you recall, Maria Pachón Fuentes, one of our students, had presented to the board in several meetings in the spring and talked about, she actually talked about prefects and setting up student prefects and it sort of morphed into an ambassador program. And it actually has launched here at the high school. So Phil Campbell had worked with Suzanne Short, interim principal, and Bobby Zagorelli, assistant principal as well, Phil interim assistant, in developing a student ambassador program. That's already launched, so yesterday, on the first day, they were, student ambassadors were out in the hallways with bright green t-shirts so that any new students that needed help, directions, getting to different places, they were there. But the focus, so what it started with, so they reached out to the Student Leadership Council and Student Leadership Council volunteers were participating yesterday, but it's actually gonna expand out to the greater school population to get more participation in the program. But really focusing on kids, helping kids develop a sense of belonging, helping them feel part of the community, helping them to get to know RYE. And if you recall back in the spring when Maria came to us and, and talked about this in, in her experience, she was a student that moved to RYE, I believe it was at the end of ninth grade or 10th grade and, and coming in not knowing anyone and recommending that it would be a great way to help kids that are feeling disconnected or marginalized, helping bring kids into the, the mix and understand what's happening in, in life at RYE High School. The third was looking at the notion of parent support and this did come in the student support group, but talking about how we can support families in better supporting their kids. And this is something that, as we talked about, it was me working with our parent organizations and parent teacher organizations and identifying ways to help families that may feel marginalized and disconnected to become more connected to the school. So looking at different communication structures that keep families better informed. Certainly, one of the themes, one of the things we're always working on is improving communication. That's certainly something that we'll talk about because our, our parent organizations do a tremendous amount of outreach and support from the POs and the PTOs and RZEs, working with them. I meet with, with the heads of those groups once a month and that will be on an early agenda to start that work with those folks.
So Eric, before we move off of this, for the student ambassador program that, that has been initiated, is that at the moment mostly focused on new students?
It's been, it's both. So, I mean, yesterday they were out in the hallways with bright green shirts when we had new students and ninth graders that came into the building yesterday, a little earlier than everyone else. And they were out in the building helping kids find the right places. So it's gonna pivot to the start of school and everybody getting acclimated to sense of belonging and, and kids that may be marginalized or, or disconnected, bringing kids into the fold more. The next, and, and this was, you know, one of the recommendations from student support was that we develop a greater understanding of the culture response of sustaining education framework from the state. And throughout the course of the 21, 22 school year, our focus, one of our areas of focus will be on developing that understanding of the framework for faculty and staff as well as parents, the broader curriculum and students. And as the board discussed at length at the last meeting, really trying to determine what does this mean for us in RYE? Where is there alignment or disconnection between the CRSE framework and the RYE commitment? What does it mean in our classrooms? And determine if there's alignment between the principles of the framework, the RYE commitment and our current programs and start to look at and doing some analysis of where do we think we need to make some modifications or changes or start to look at things differently. But that the most important piece is to really spend the time and focus on developing that understanding of the framework so that we, we really can say what the framework is and what it means for us in RYE and what it means for our students. And so as we go further along, you know, in professional development and curriculum, it's all going to come back to this understanding. And it, it's not just the staff, the faculty and staff that needs to understand the framework, it's also the community. So I know Tricia has been in contact with folks at the state and, and people that could help us in that process and has been working on that.
What do you think the, you know, for, for this one, I mean, I get it, but what do you think the, like, the output next steps of that are in more concrete terms?
The output next steps after the understanding or?
Or I guess what, you know, when you say understanding, so who's understanding? How is it documented? That's what I'm getting at.
So, so output, for example, would be that with our faculty and staff, that we will be taking a deep dive into the framework, unpacking it, trying to understand what the, the four pillars of the framework mean, what it means in terms of the written language on the page, what it means, the implications are for the classroom, for the community, and, and doing that same work across the year in departments. So what does that mean in social studies at the secondary level? What does that mean in an elementary classroom? And where does it line up during a crosswalk with the RYE commitment and our current programs to see where are things aligned and where are they not? Where is there misalignment? But it's not just, you know, so we anticipate this is, this is gonna be a process that happens across the school year because, you know, you have a professional development day, we have one on November 2nd, but that will certainly not be enough time to develop a real understanding and do the kind of work. So I know that we're, we've been working and, and the staff development team under Tricia's leadership have been working on the plan for November 2nd, but what does that look like for the education of the staff and the unpacking with the staff? But also doing the same, going out into the community and running programs for parents and community members to develop that same kind of understanding. So, you know, it could be through, you know, the, the knowledge cafe formats that we've done in different areas where we've done some learning around the budget and different programmings where people get to unpack different components of it. And so there could be a night where we're unpacking one of the pillars for the community and people are involved and actively engaged in that. And then another night, a, a bit later, on the second pillar so that they could develop that understanding as well.
Well, cause I, I think that one of the things that we talked about a lot when we did meet in August was that there's, there's a lot of, you know, and even when we've, I've sat down and read this, there's a lot of language that maybe isn't necessarily common speak for people who are not in education. So I think there's a piece of it that exists in just understanding what a lot of those, what those, what those, what that language is trying to tell us. And then I think the crucial part is aligning with what we're already, what we've already established as our vision for the school district and seeing, you know, there's, there's a lot in this, these frameworks and maybe some is applicable and maybe some of it isn't. And so I think that's, that's a separate piece that feels like it's a, an important part of how do we know how we want to use this framework? Because it, the framework is, it's all about, you know, what you want to apply and how you want to use it.
Yeah.
Yeah, we talked a lot at our meeting in, in August, I mean, this is one of our, I think our deepest dive.
Yeah.
And I think what we took out of it was kind of what you just said, is like, we know what we're trying to do and, and how do we use the framework to make what we want to do stronger? It's not a matter of taking what we're doing or rebuilding everything we're doing to fit this framework, it's how do we use the framework to make us better? And I think that was a really, that was a good, robust discussion we had and I, and I thought the way you came out of it was, was terrific.
And then the last point on student support was evaluating and, and looking at ways to further integrate social emotional learning into the curriculum. You all know the, the work we've done at the elementary level in adding the counselor at the elementary level, our, further developing our partnership with the RYE Youth Council, adding the sixth grade component this year with the RYE Youth Council, working in classrooms, developing the Habits of Mind course, which really focuses on executive functioning and DBT skills and, and lots of great skill-based work for the kids, but really looking at ways to, to further integrate and build upon those good structures. And we happen to have, thanks to the support of the board, the, the partners at ESS that are helping us in a, as part of our COVID recovery plan with additional mental health supports. But we believe we can also tap into them to help us really focus on, on developing a stronger sense of belonging among students.
I think that's a great, such a great way of saying it, sense of belonging, you know, we've been talking about social emotional learning for years and what I'm really enjoying and liking is that what, what this is boiling down to, a lot of these conversations are starting to come around that, you know, for students to reach their own goals, they have to be engaged. And the way you're engaged is when you feel like you belong a part of the community. It's a very simple way of saying, you know, we need to do a better job of making sure every student, no matter where they come from, feels engaged at an equal level. And I'm, I'm really enjoying the way that this language is starting to circle around that and we're starting to pull in SEL and, and all the other facts we're hearing and we're starting to see a kind of a vision, a path for that. So, thank you.
Moving on to professional learning, there was the, the gathering and learning phase and this goes back to what I was just saying about developing the understanding of the CRSE framework, but also developing an understanding of the, the state blueprint for improved results for students with disabilities, which is another critically important document that will be part of that work in the professional learning efforts. So it's in, in meeting, developing those understandings and again, looking at alignment, looking at what are the implications for our work? And then to identify ways to, to bring students into the professional learning experiences and have student faculty professional learning throughout the 2021, 2022 school year. A good model of that right now is we have student representatives on curriculum council and they're really helpful having kids on curriculum council. But there are so many ways that bringing student voice and student perspective into conversations that are around teaching and learning and, and our own professional growth can be incredibly valuable for, for us and for the kids. So that's something that we'll be looking at across this school year.
I think another example of that is when we brought kids into the design process for.
The design teams, yes.
For our, our projects that are going on now. I mean, they, they, they provide a, a perspective that really no adults can because they're the end user. So it's, it's, that's another great example of how the student voice really helped to, to, you know, create a better end product out of, out of the work.
And I, it, thank you for reminding me of that, the, the students in the academy, designing the academy space up on the third floor.
Yeah.
Which is really exciting.
Which goes back to Chris's SEL point, which is, you know, you're engaged when you are part of the process and you feel a sense of, of belonging and productivity, really.
Absolutely.
And as I mentioned earlier, in terms of the world of curriculum, again, it goes back to a, a developing that understanding of the CRSE framework and developing the understanding of the blueprint for improved results for students with disabilities. Before we can do anything or look at any kind of curriculum analysis and curriculum changes, we need to have that solid understanding of those core documents and the alignment process that we talked about with the RYE commitment. So the data analysis and reporting, talked about analyzing our existing data and identify any additional data necessary and, and doing that by October 31st. Looking at connections to RYE Act and Challenge Success data and, and trying to put those together by November 30th. And then if you recall, the, the group talked a lot about bringing in outside expertise that could help us in some of the learnings we, in, in implementing the Panorama Equity Survey, is bringing experts in that could help us customize, do customized analysis of our existing data and create new mechanisms for bringing data in. So we've actually, several members of the data subgroup of the task force and myself and Nancy Pasqual, our partner, former board member, a partner from RYE Act, met with representatives from the Iona College Center for Social Research. And what we're looking at is a, a data collection and analysis partnership with Iona. And they're actually going back, so, so we talked about what we're trying to accomplish, shared what the recommendations were of the task force, talked about the kind of data we collected and the analysis we've done so far. And they actually talked about three different departments. So the Center for Social Research, their business program and their psychology program. They're bringing those three different departments together in working with us because they, they felt the statistical analysis piece. So what we're expecting back from them is in early to mid-October, we have a follow-up meeting that's already scheduled where they're going to bring a proposal to that small subgroup and talk to us about how they would envision this partnership moving forward and what they could offer to us in, in making that commitment to the data analysis and the collection and, and thinking about going beyond the perception data that we collected with the Panorama survey, looking at the anecdotal data that we have from the Instagram posts from students and the qualitative data that we have from interviews with students and faculty and really thinking about how do we take all of that together and look at the data we have from RYE Act and Challenge Success because there's a lot of overlap in terms of sense of belonging, kids' behaviors, kids' experiences in those areas and those surveys and that, and that data set. And the reason we're focusing with the team at Iona is because they have been supporting the work of RYE Act since the origins of the RYE Act surveying here in the district. So they know the district, they know one data set quite well and they could be very helpful to us in that process.
Eric, when, when you met with them, did they comment at all on, you know, any of the, the data sets that came back from Panorama in terms of how it was sourced or were they comfortable with the questions, the data that we collected and the way that we collected it so that they feel that they can, they can synthesize it?
So what, what they, what we shared with them was, these are the things we've done and we provided some of the, some of it to them to take a look at, but they weren't sort of evaluating what we've done for whether this was good or not because the first thing we said is, we know that there's more and different data that we need to collect because this, you know, we sort of went with this one direction and that's why we're looking for experts to help us in that process. So, you know, I, I mean, we certainly learned that there are limitations to what the Panorama platform provided for us. The anal, you know, the depth and flexibility of the analysis that we would have hoped for wasn't quite there. So, you know, the, you know, they market themselves really well and So, you know, they market themselves really well and they have for some of their surveys, they have a tremendous, there's the ability to do tremendous analysis in comparing yourselves to different systems and different regions and national and local and regional. They just don't have that with the Equity Survey yet because it's a fairly new survey that they've been implementing. So they weren't in evaluative mode, but we certainly were very upfront with them in saying, we know that we've just sort of, you know, scratched the surface in what we've got. And we also talked to them a bit about the audit, that's the audit of the data that's underway that Caitlin and her team in conjunction with the RIC are doing of our student performance and attendance data. So they know that there is a lot of data that we have, that we haven't even begun the possibility of digesting. I mean, the reality is that as a system, we're not built with the capacity to do that level of analysis. That's why we have the RIC that does the performance analysis and looking at the team at Iona, which we believe could potentially help us to get on that path and provide that level of support and capacity to do that.
That's great.
Well, and we also know from hearing from our community that, and we talked about this a lot last spring, that the Panorama Equity Survey was a little more narrow in scope. We did try, there was an effort within the demographics that were filled out to try and expand that, but that survey is fairly narrow in scope. So I think it's important that this inclusion of the RYE Act and Childhood Success data, which was, you know, has some longitudinal impact because it was, there were at least two, maybe three of the RYE Act implementation of that survey.
There have been two since I've been here and I think there was one before.
There might have been one before. So I think that that is also a way that we can broaden what we want to look at, which is, you know, race is a part of it, which is what a lot of that focus was. But it's also much more multifaceted than that.
Well, following on that, Jen, I think Iona, it sounds amazing that they have that ability to look, they've worked with RYE, so glad that that is working out. It sounds like it's going to be great. And just wondering, would they have, through their research team, do they have survey creation capabilities and sort of as that longer-term step to expand into, you know, inclusion surveys to broaden, you know, our database over the long term? I know this is a first step, but just wondering how this partnership could evolve, if you have any information?
We did talk to them about our desire to do that work and that's something that they're working on on their end to come back to us in October and tell us what their capacity is. Because they, you know, it is not a huge, the center does not have a huge staff. There's one full-time staff member at the center with student researchers and folks that are attached to it. But that's why they talked about involving the business department and the psych department to build their internal capacity to do this work with us. So we did talk about identifying, because if it's not building, customizing, it's identifying tools that we can use to gather that data that we're missing and give us a more comprehensive view.
Well, and it's hard to know what we're missing until we can look at sort of this larger compilation of all the different data that we've collected over the years, I feel like.
So they'll be coming back to us. We already set the meeting date in mid-October to hear back from them at that point in time. The next step in the data analysis was to build out alumni lists. So that was something that we started, that process, that's going to happen throughout the course of the school year. We do know from, Kelsey, as you know, from our team, we were both on the data team, that we had some connections through teachers that have connections to kids and lists that exist on Facebook. So we're going to be gathering those from the folks that have them. We did change the way people, kids' email addresses get removed when they graduate from the system in the spring. So instead of everyone's removed and you opt them in, you opt them, wait, you had to opt out of continuing in the mailing system with your email address upon graduating from the system last year, which was different than what we've done in the past. So people, if they don't want the email, they'll notify us or probably mark us as spam and they'll never see us again. But, you know, we've talked with the counseling department to start to build out those alumni lists. And there was a terrific idea and we will implement it this spring, which is doing graduate exit interviews. I'm not sure how many we'll do, but there will be an opportunity for our graduates to participate in exit interviews. And we did talk a bit about doing some like five-years-out interviews because we did learn, and I learned in talking to some of our alumni a year ago, that they looked at things very differently after a year at college or two years at college and helped them understand themselves and their experiences a little differently. So I think having ways to catch up again two, three, five years out and understand our impact will be helpful as well. So we'll be launching those in the spring as well.
Eric, sorry, go ahead. I was just going to say those feedback loops are so helpful in our system being reflective of itself, too. So you can really gain a lot of insight from those kinds of discussions. Sorry, go ahead.
Question, do we, in terms of data analysis, do we have any kind of, I guess not interviews, but questionnaires for students that leave the district? And I'm thinking back to Tom's question with enrollment, I think between eighth and ninth grade, there was a drop of 20 students. And I think you mentioned it might be because of real estate changes. But do we ever try to reach out to students that don't come back to our school to see why they didn't come back and if there are any trends that we can identify there?
We haven't done that yet. I know that's something that Erin and I have talked about in terms of special education families, if they decide to educate their child or children outside of the district, about starting to put in a process to have those kinds of exit interviews and conversations. And that's something we're looking toward creating.
Great, thank you.
And then in terms of community engagement, the recommendation was community listening sessions so that we could learn about people's experiences with inclusion and exclusion in our system. And the specifics were to identify community partners, developing a plan and identifying constituent groups and creating a schedule and opportunities. So I know that we do have community partners that have already said that they would absolutely help us in this process, groups like RYE Act and the RYE Youth Council. And these will be some of the conversations I'm having with the Interfaith Council and the faith-based community. So those are the beginning steps of the outreach so that we can, and I would envision this a little bit later on in the year as we get launched and start to build this plan. But that will happen across this 21, 22 school year. And the last, so this is a repeat slide for the board, but I wanted for the community's purposes, it's just the update on the equity audit. So we are working with the Lower Hudson Regional Information Center in pulling data from the data warehouse, which is where the district is required with all of our assessment and testing data, enrollment data, demographic data. It all goes to what's called a data warehouse. And the RIC is an arm of State Education Department. It's based out of Southern Westchester Voces. The data is being pulled as overall data, overall performance data, as well as disaggregated by subgroups in terms of demographics, services that students receive and income. District technology staff led by Caitlin, Dr. Sasson, and the RIC staff are pulling and organizing the data. And our expected completion is mid-October to that data. And what we're looking at is data from 1718 through 2021. And we know that 2021 data is going to be a little different because of the, not the cancellation, but the optional nature of state exams. But we will still have demographic data, we'll still have enrollment data, and we'll go back in history on, you know, New York State ELA and math assessments, that's grades three to eight, Regents assessments, grades nine to 12, AP assessments, suspension data, ESSA reports, there's a whole load of ESSAs, the federal reporting data that we have to put in, and looking back at our student enrollment and our course enrollment. So our overall student enrollment and doing some analysis of demographics there, and then looking at our course enrollment and doing a crosswalk and looking at demographic analysis of who's taking courses and what courses they are taking. And that is the update for where we are at this moment in time.
Thank you very much. I think this feels very comprehensive based on the large discussion from August and the estimated timing and dates are very helpful so we can keep track of what's coming. And, you know, we look forward to lots of discussion around all of these items throughout the year, especially this fall so far, but then more so as we get into the year. Anybody else have any other comments or questions?
Well, I didn't enter in the round of thank you earlier, so I'm just going to do it now. Only to say that, you know, we've had the global pandemic, we had nature, Mother Nature wreak havoc everywhere. And seeing the aggressive timeline that you're putting, not aggressive, but you guys are, the commitment of this administration to this important initiative, I'm just grateful for that because it's such important work and we're in a moment where there's so many things happening. So just appreciative of the consistent effort that comes across such a breadth of issues and so many things are important. And it's just amazing how you guys continue to progress our district, you know, further and further forward. So finally got to say my thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so I didn't do it with the first presentation, but I will say if there are any members of the public who have questions related to these two presentations, please come forward. So then we will move on to the hearing of the public on non-agenda items. We welcome and encourage our community members to address the board at this time. Please come to the podium, state your name, address, and if you are representing an organization. To ensure everyone has the opportunity to speak, please limit your remarks to three minutes. Please understand that we may not be able to respond publicly to your comments or questions at this time, and we will not entertain comments regarding individual students or district personnel in order to protect the privacy of individuals in our school community.
Brian, will you put the microphone up there?
Hi. I was here, I submitted two points, so I don't know, in those forms that you have to submit the questions the week before? The ones that ask you on the board if you're going to speak, I submitted two.
Oh, I'm sorry. I think that might have been from an old agenda because we don't, since we're back, we did that when we weren't in public anymore. I'm sorry, I apologize.
See, that was a
Thank you. But you're going to have to refresh on that.
And if you could just stick your name and address, thank you very much.
Jacqueline Majors-Lackman, I live at 19 Gene Street in RYE. So I don't know if you're going to make me keep it to three minutes, but I'll just, the one topic I'm going to drop, I think, but I'll just, since it was on that form, I'll go ahead and just mention it. There was a notion floating around that the eighth graders might be invited to play varsity sports here. And I don't know what happened with it. I guess it got dropped, but I heard it was going to come up. So I was only going to be here to say that, my opinion, so I don't have, I don't have to delve into that, but I did do a RYE Moms poll. So I just brought papers that if you guys wanted to pass them around and see them. I'm on the opinion that we shouldn't let eighth graders play in high school sports. And I think that this is such a pressure cooker here, the way it already is at this school, that taking slaps from ninth, 10th, 11th, 12th graders to let these eighth graders, I mean, I can't even believe they're letting them play on JV. But I'm not going to die on a sword over this, but I do think, I ran this poll and honestly, the moms in the town had so many great points that I would have never thought of in a million years that I printed the whole thing for you. So I know it's, I work in marketing, so I tried to make this very fair and I did it from the point of view of, I think the word I used was, just again, I used the word endorse so that people could go into it saying, in a positive light. And people didn't endorse it, but I tried to lay on that side. But I just think if you do get brought that before the board, I know Harrison is now letting seventh graders play varsity, so it could come here. I just hope you'll look at it carefully. I would say maybe you could do your own poll much better than my RYE Moms poll, but I just wanted to bring up that point, so. But the real reason I'm here tonight is about the counselor. So I wanted to start by saying that I understand that everybody wants to move on from last year, but I don't. I think that there was a lot of damage done to these kids. And I know it started really with that principal that was leaving, who was the one who retired and sort of checked out that last semester of when the pandemic started. And then there was this middle principal that had some bad decisions that left classrooms with two kids in them sometimes, and then mysteriously just disappeared. And now there's a temporary principal at the high school, which again, an upbeat, lovely leader, but it's temporary and it's default. And I don't, nobody specifically picked that person to be the principal, she's just the principal. So I just want to say that my son spent the entire summer working on SAT prep and math makeup because of all that was lost. And, you know, you could say, well, they tell the kids just go test optional. But really, last year, 79% of the kids that submitted applications to the Elite Universities of the United States submitted them with SAT scores. So it isn't really like you can just go test optional, although, you know, you can, but I don't think it's as easy as everyone said. But today, I really want to talk about the counselor's office because this is why I'm here. So I'm not sure if you're all aware of what's going on at the high school head counselor's office, but I'm going to give you my homework, the experience, my take on the situation quickly. And in case I run out of time, I just want to say that I hope the board will take the time to dig into this issue a little bit and try to set some uniform standards and a strategy for what you want the counselor's unit to be and do and sort of maybe embrace it as a topic that's important. So I'm going to start with what you may or may not know, is Ms. Dixon retired?
So I'm sorry, oh, sorry. So I just, as you're heading into this topic, I just want to be very mindful of not talking about individuals. This may actually be, and I certainly don't want to keep you from
No problem.
Passing on your opinion, but it may actually be a better conversation to have either directly with Dr. Byrne or I can certainly have a conversation with you myself and pass on information to the board. I just want to be very careful because we certainly don't want to be talking about any individuals
Okay, I'll leave names out, no problem. So a person retired after 35 years here. And it was little or no warning to anybody. And the person had worked here for 35 years. So maybe you all knew this was going to happen, but I didn't. And we received an email at 7:49 on Sunday night, August 22nd. That's August 22nd, we got this email at 7:49, that was a Sunday night. And my heart stopped. Then I burst into tears and then I thought, what else is going to happen to these kids? So I wanted to say, why do you think this is such a big deal? Well, as you guys all probably know, the Common App requires that the kids have to turn in a letter from the counselors and two letters from teachers they select. This is the Common App to get into college. And the early decision apps are due on November 1st. So if you guys know that the weight, if any of you have talked to admissions counselors, there's a huge weight put on these letters, maybe disproportionately, I've heard from some of these elite admission counselors. And if you don't believe me, I'll invite you to listen to the podcast inside the And if you don't believe me, I'll invite you to listen to the podcast inside the admissions, Yale admissions office. And that podcast goes into great detail about how critical these three letters are, to the point that they even say that no elite university, so that's anybody in the top 20 universities, even guarantees they're going to look at the other two. So the Common App allows you to upload five letters. They say that they won't even guarantee they're going to open the other two. Like, those three are so important to these schools. So I just want to know how, how, how a new person in this job is going to write letters about all these kids without, in six weeks, without knowing them and having, sure, decent files, I'm sure that this person that left, left extraordinary files, but that seems pretty lofty to me. And then you might say, okay, so maybe not everyone's going to an elite university, fine. But you know, Rye gets pretty well represented among the top 20 universities, so let's leave it at that. But I heard yesterday that the counselor office hired somebody to write a batch of these letters because there's too many of them, and the person has not met any of, the person was telling somebody else, I won't even say who, that she hadn't met any of these kids, and she was writing these letters based on notes. So, I mean, just going back to, like, how, what else can we do to these kids? I mean, forget elite universities, who wants anybody writing a letter for them that somebody doesn't know them? So actually, I had a really decent conversation with the new counselor and feel like I'm making room, so it's not even exactly about me. I'm just saying in general, this is pretty terrible. So then I also want to make the point that the admissions officers had tremendous relationships with some of the people that have left. So I've spoken to some of these new counselors and they've said things like, oh yeah, we have to meet those people. Like, okay, so now let's talk about how the board gets involved. So when you think about the person that they replaced this person with that had been here for 35 years, wouldn't you hope that it would be someone that has the same caliber, right? Or same relationships or something? So I don't know what exactly you want out of this counselor office, but shouldn't it have some consistency? So some of the people they brought in, for example, one of the persons actually came from admissions office at a university. Another person's out of college a couple of years and worked at one other job before they got here at a private school. Like, this is the new group that they've brought in, and some of them aren't even, I think some of the jobs aren't even filled yet. I heard there's a temporary person in there now. So that whole idea of succession planning and what you want out of this, like, I hope that you'll take this seriously and think about what this should be because, you know, you could go back to this person, let's just get back for a second to the person that was here for 35 years and left. That person said to me, well, you, this was in May, well, you don't have to hire one of those counselor companies, those outside companies, you have me. And I believe that person. I do think those people that were here knew everybody. I mean, you could feel a sense of that they knew what the college officers, the admission officers wanted and who they were, but then the person they replaced it with is nothing even similar. So I would say, kind of, what was the plan? If you guys had somebody that was 35 years in the job, wasn't somebody thinking about, like, hey, we should backfill this somehow, or we should make sure a second person knows what this person knows, or something that had a plan? Because to me, it sounded like there were shockwaves in the building. And when I found out why we got that letter on August 22nd, I probed, I went the right route, I went to the principal, I did it the right way, they said, well, we didn't want to tell anybody until we were sure we had a new person in place. So, okay, but in the meantime, like, the whole summer went by. Like, that was just, to me, that, and when I finally did reach the person that was formerly in this job, she told me she had written a letter in June to all the families and the school decided not to send the letter. So, I mean, you might think that this is like, oh, frivolous, but when you're talking about, we've now learned from these college counselors, these letters count for the world, and now some strangers are writing these letters that don't even know a huge group of these kids. I mean, it's got to be hundreds that won't have the benefit of having a counselor. So there's one more thing that's unusual that's happened in the counselor office.
If you could, if we could just try to finish up, because I know I interrupted you, so I didn't want to go too close to the three minutes.
Okay, two more, two more quick points. My daughter has had three counselors, and she's only been here, what was, two years, and part of the two years weren't here. And when you ask the counselors, the office, why, they say, well, we made some changes and some things have been moved around. Again, that's how it goes, is what they've told me. When I pushed back, that was the answer I got. And so I'm just going to finish by saying that, that I hope that you'll think about a strategy for what the counselor office should be and what you want it to be. And maybe it can't cater to college kids or to kids going to college, but a huge percentage of kids from this school do go on to college. So if that's what you want, thinking about what the makeup of this department ought to be. Now, I know you're all going to be happy because, you know, I'm leaving soon, my kids are almost done, so you'll be done with me. But I do hope that this is a thing that you'll think about for the long run because it does impact how this school system develops, the relationships that moves forward. And I would say for a school that has parking spaces for the college reps, and it makes it that important, this should be even more important. So, thank you.
Thank you very much for your feedback and information. So I don't believe we have any other commentary for the non-agenda items. So we will move on to the consent agenda. So can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Vivek Kamath, seconded by Chris Repetto. And before we do a final approval, we're going to do a walkthrough of each of the sections on the consent agenda to make sure that if anyone has any questions or comments they want to make on any of the agenda items, we can do that now. So the first section is the consent agenda general.
I guess it would be helpful to get an update on just some of the major changes to the professional learning plan?
Yes, thank you. So I just want to give a brief overview of the professional learning plan for this coming school year. The plan has three goals. The first goal has to do with utilizing the best instructional strategies in the classroom. And we're really working towards that goal with, through our work with project-based learning, inquiry-based learning. We're putting into practice an instructional coaching model this year where all of our staff developers are working one-on-one with teams of teachers on active learning strategies. The second goal is around social and emotional well-being and wellness for all students. And our teachers are engaging in professional learning around some new curriculum in that area. We have our health curriculum in third and fourth grade. We're partnering with the Rye Youth Council with our Habits and Mind course in middle school. And we're also partnering with the Youth Council and Rye Act around professional learning with a peer-to-peer program at the high school, as well as the youth mental health first aid course that we'll be engaging with. And then our third goal is, has to do with utilizing data to inform instruction through a multi-tiered system of support. And we've partnered right now, we're partnering right now with the Haskins Lab, which is a huge piece of that work. And they're training our MTSS teams at the schools for us to look at our data kind of across the system and then, and by student, to figure out what supports they need so they can be successful in the classroom. And also a large part of that goal also is implementing our universal screener this year and using that data to help students overall. So just a little brief snapshot.
And I know Trish is, I think the next board meeting is summer professional learning, so you're going to hear about the summer programs that we're actually working toward these goals. We did some pretty intensive work with Haskins over the summer in our phonics focus and supporting our students with language-based learning disabilities, as well as the programs that ran over the summer. You'll get a recap of some of those, and then the work moving ahead in professional learning through the course of the year. So you'll get much more detail at the next meeting as well.
Any other for that section? Okay, then the next is consent agenda fiscal construction. And I think for this in particular, there's, I think we'd want to get a little bit of background on the three, two change orders and one allowance authorization that are listed here.
Yep. A majority of what is listed there has to do with Midland School and expansion of scope. What essentially happened is there was an undiscovered condition at Midland School where firewalls were not constructed as part of the original construction of the building, which dates back to 1950, where firewalls weren't even a requirement, but they are now. So the way it works with SED is as you progress through construction, if there are any compliance issues that are outstanding, they have to be corrected as part of scope of construction. So it became clear to us that there were a lack of firewalls, meaning fire prevention between the main hallways and our classrooms in Midland School. It presents a challenge because in order to be able to correct the situation, we actually had to access the walls between the corridor and the classrooms, which wasn't the intent of any scope of construction, but now became part of construction.
And the walls, the space was like a sandwich. It was like the baloney between the lockers on one side and the built-in cabinetry on the inside wall in the classroom.
So we did some prototypes, if you will, going into construction, trying to figure out the best method of reaching the area where firewalls needed to be constructed. And we quickly determined that going through the hallways was not the more practical way of doing it. We thought we could easily remove the lockers, if anybody's familiar with Midland School, to access the firewalls, build up what we needed to, and then replace the lockers. It became clear to us that in trying to do it that way, we were actually not able to preserve the lockers. And if anybody knows them, they're actually well-constructed, nice space, good storage. And it wasn't something that we really wanted to give up. So we went to Plan B, which was accessing the fire, or what was to be the firewall through the classroom side, which much of the casework in those classrooms, if anybody remembers, was kind of beat up. So it gave us an opportunity to remove all of the casework that was attached to the walls, erect the firewalls as needed, and then create what I'm calling alcoves in each of the classrooms, which is now going to be replaced with mobile shelving, a much more practical way of storage units in the classrooms that can be moved and mobilized when teachers need specific resources, whatever the case may be. But as a result, left us with a portion of the floor that was identified as asbestos. And as you know, when you encounter asbestos, as long as it's not, what's the word I'm looking for?
Disturbed.
Disturbed, thank you. It's no harm. But once you get into a position where you're removing casework that's attached, we had to enact asbestos removal for the section of where the casework was. In doing that, we then created an uneven floor because all of the floor tile under the casework had to be removed. And then we had to come up with a substitute flooring that would fill in the gap where the floor was removed under the casework, which then quickly identified the fact that we had an opportunity that we should expand the scope in each of the classrooms to remove all of the existing flooring that had asbestos in all of the classrooms, which we were not going to do initially, but then decided to embark on because at this point, the building was empty and it was an opportunity that we felt really would enhance just the building in itself and the entire construction project. Hence, that's why you see layers of related work associated with the expansion of work that we had to add to the scope of the project. And that's really what you're looking at there, a majority of it.
Okay, so that's, what you just described is, makes up majority of the 412,000.
Correct. Because in order to stay on schedule, because we added such a tremendous amount of scope, we literally were running three shifts, 24 hours a day, to absorb the additional work around the asbestos removal that was going to be required to be able to stay on track.
Right. Well, and in addition to the first part, which was the, the walls, and the firewall doesn't fit, doesn't meet current standards, safety standards.
You have to have complete separation in spaces to buy time in the event, God forbid, of a fire.
Well, I mean, I'd never say that's a small amount of money, and it's not, relative to the amount of work we're doing, it's not gigantic, but it sounds like most of it obviously had to be done, and the new floors are spectacular. So we got a lot of advantages out of this, is what I walked, I said, what is this? What are we looking at? And then I realized, when you walked us through it earlier and then now the details, it's remarkable how, hey, we're going to have firewalls. Yay. And the casework that's going to be mobile, we know how awesome that is in the classrooms, and the floors are spectacular. So it's actually.
It's LVT flooring, which is newer product that you'll see in schools. It's actually tremendously quiet when kids are walking around.
Acoustically, yeah.
It does not require us to wax floors, which is a tremendous drain of time and resources all summer long that you see our custodians doing. So it's certainly a leg up for them in terms of general maintenance on a regular basis that we're being able to direct in other areas. That's helpful. The durability, you've seen it, we've used the same product. That's the other thing. It's consistency throughout the district that we're trying to implement. You know, when you have the benefit of going through our buildings, we've tried to be very thoughtful about keeping all of the products consistent, whether it's toilet paper dispensers. I know that that sounds crazy, but they're universal throughout the district, so when Midland runs out, the high school can pitch in. And these are real big time savers that we have. And if we are moving custodians around from building to building, all of the materials are the same, how we clean is the same. It's a lot faster and quicker to get those things.
More efficient.
Yeah, it's all terrific. And it is remarkable to go into those classrooms with new floor and to see just what a different feel it is. It's just calmer and just a much, much nicer environment.
We do anticipate, but this is separate from the consent agenda, that we will be doing later on when the bulk of the summer projects are completed, we will be offering some community tours so that people can see the changes in the schools at different places. Obviously not during the school day, but outside of the school day, some community tours to share.
It's a great idea.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. So moving on to consent agenda fiscal. Oh, so I think, should I, we have in here the resolution?
Yeah, so we did have to pass, the first item on the agenda in this section is a resol, it's an emergency resolution. It is the ability of the business office for facilities, I should really say operations in response to Hurricane Ida and the damage that was sustained. One of the biggest things that was to our benefit was being able to act very quickly as a result. We knew what was happening as it was happening, and that this resolution allows us to move forward with contracting with vendors and any remediation or work that needs to be done in response to the damage that takes place for going, purchasing requirements that typically we would have to follow in order to procure services and goods as a result, which typically is, you know, a seven-day bidding, opening bids and the whole, and it can be very cumbersome in situations like this where really time wasn't on our side. So this gives us that opportunity and flexibility to get contractors in here to do the work that we needed to do.
Great. That makes total sense. Anything else in that category? Okay. Consent agenda professional appointments. Consent agenda professional appointments? Consent agenda, sorry, consent agenda classified appointments? And then, consent agenda special education?
Oh, I'm sorry, I did want to-
Oh, sorry, yep.
Sorry, I'm going to mark off the emergency.
Oh, sure. Go ahead.
I mean, just was curious in terms of what, you know, our other options were there and what impact that'll have on the budget. I'm not questioning it, just asking for more information.
Yeah, well, we don't know yet, so we're still discovering things as we go along and make the repairs. So, and then, of course, the insurance piece is a big piece of it. The insurance representatives were on hand Thursday morning as well. I think we met with him at like 10 o'clock or 10:30 and started that process.
And in addition, because we were under construction in all of our locations, we're required to enact builder's risk insurance. So, there's additional coverage for the projects that were not completed. There is also a liability on the contractor's end for those projects that were not completed. So, it really is a multi-layered insurance equation that still we're working out as to whose piece is what-
Right.
And who would be responsible for certain coverages because of where we were in different phases of construction.
Right. I guess my question more pointedly is, so the resolution is that to authorize as an ordinary contingent expense, you know, in terms of, what does that actually mean in budgeting terms?
So, expenses that we wouldn't normally have, so this, we have certain services that we contract for on a regular basis for carpentry or electrical or anything like that. But specialized services such as mold or water remediation, we typically don't have a vendor on file that we have bid out, because that's not a typical service that we would do. This allows us to reach out to vendors to provide those specialized services without having to go through the bid process that we normally wouldn't have just readily available to us. And a lot more flexibility, because to be perfectly honest, on Thursday, we had three separate remediation teams here that we contracted with, with three different vendors, just because of the need and the-
And the scope.
Of what we had. That's not typical or ordinary, but necessary.
Right. And so, us not approving this would be essentially tying your hands with more of a much longer bid and bureaucratic process to make the selections-
Yeah.
As opposed to dealing with, "The rain just came, we've got to deal with it."
Correct. We would still be waiting, to be perfectly honest.
Yeah, school would not be-
Yeah. Cool.
Okay. Okay, so, then, can I have a vote to approve the consent agenda? Seven, nothing. Okay. So, since we went through everything, I mean, I don't have any gifts on here to announce either, so we can move on to, there are no items that have been removed, there's no presentation and discussion to, any communications to and from the board? Kelsey?
So, I just wanted to highlight that the city has redefined the Huellet one way. You might recall that last year, when we went hybrid, the city put in an emergency order to allow Huellet, which abuts Milton School, to be one way for the entire school day because of the transfer of students at different times throughout the day. That emergency order has expired over the summer, and because we're back in full-time in-person, we're going back to the original city code. So, through my work with Traffic and Pedestrian Safety Liaison, I just wanted to confirm for the community, for the board, administration, that we're back to the morning hours of 8:00 to 9:00 a.m., and afternoon, 2:30 to 3:30 for one way on Huellet. And just will mention that, you know, as always, walking and biking makes all situations around all schools a little bit easier to maneuver, so I will always plug that in my work through TPS. And then, the final communication, I did have a question recently from a parent on the policy around peanuts and allergies. And I, you know, I know Dr. Byrne, one of the first emails I remember getting from him in 2017 when he joined, you know, was a letter to our community, sort of raising nut awareness and, you know, the impact that peanut allergies have on some students, the material impact. So, I just wanted to maybe give Dr. Byrne the chance to remind our community of where we stand on that, because I did update this one parent, but as we go into the school year, it is so important.
Now, that's a great reminder for families. I know Tracy Barnett, our Director of Health Services, typically sends a notice out early in the school year, so I'll be following up with Tracy tomorrow and find out when that's scheduled. I do know Allergy Awareness Week comes up early in the fall, if I recall correctly, and we do a lot of education for families and students at that time. But, we do strive to be as peanut-free as possible and ask families not to send children to school with peanut products and be supportive of our students who are not allergic, and those reminders will be coming out at the school level.
And just one other, picking up on the fact that Kelsey's talking about traffic and pedestrian safety with the opening of school, I've seen a few reminders about making sure that students and drivers are very aware of using crosswalks, especially where, you know, especially if there's a busy traffic road, and also where the crossing guards are, you know, I think, and coming off of this past year and a half where there was probably less-
Yep.
Need to think about crossing, maybe not so much at the end of last year, but building up to that, and just, you know, reminding people to be very careful and-
And reminding the students.
Safety first, and the students too, yes.
And so, this week, we actually have a meeting with all the principals and directors tomorrow. Pedestrian safety is one of the topics, so that those reminders will be going out in the next batch of principals' communications to families and reminders in the schools to the kids.
Great. Okay. Okay. So, then, our next Board of Education meeting will be Tuesday, September 28th, and we will talk about, we'll have an update on our summer professional learning. Can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Chris Repetto, seconded by. Callie Erickson, all those in favor. Seven, nothing. Thank you for joining us.